Good evening, everybody. I would like to bring this November 13th meeting of the Select Board to order at 7:01. If you could all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. After several months of careful review, on Monday, October 16th, the Select Board voted to update all of their policies, including the flag policy in order to make those policies consistent with applicable case law. The application for flying of the Palestinian flag was submitted to the town six hours prior to its vote on the updated policies. After consultation with counsel, based upon the timing of events and the fact that the new policy was not in effect at the time of the application was received, the determination regarding this application will be made under the prior policy as required by law. The prior flag policy specifically allowed a town resident to submit an application to fly a flag on the town's flagpole, resulting in the flagpole being considered a public forum. The recent U.S. Supreme Court decision addressing flag policies in the context of the First Amendment, Shirtlift v. Boston, requires Select Boards to make content-neutral decisions regarding the raising of flags on flagpoles deemed public forums unless the town enacts a policy restricting flagpoles to governmental speech. The content or the subject matter of a flag cannot be considered when reviewing an application presented under the old policy. According to the decision in the Shirtlift case, the town cannot prohibit a flag to be flown based on its content, its meaning, or its message. This limitation on the Select Board's discretion indicates the denial of a resident's flag application under the old policy places the town in jeopardy of legal action. Since the flag policy was passed, the town has approved applications for the Pride flag, the Armenian flag, the flag of Ireland, the North Andover Special Education Parents' Advisory Council flag, and just last month, the Israeli flag. The new policy limits the use of the flagpole to statements of governmental speech only, consistent with the Shirtlift decision. The new policy does not allow a resident to submit an application to raise a flag. Based upon the timing of the circumstances as previously described, this policy does not apply to the flag application currently in discussion. However, this is the last flag application to be considered under the prior policy. Tonight, the Select Board will be hearing public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and will be strictly enforced using this timer. Prior to the town's policies, the public comment period is typically 15 minutes. And in order to allow comments on this matter, we'll extend that period up to an hour. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between or among citizens in the Select Board. Rather, it is intended to offer citizens an opportunity to express their opinion on issues of Select Board business. The Select Board is unable to debate with citizens or give answers to citizen comments or questions during the public comment period. The Select Board has received and read all the comments that have been submitted via email. Out of respect for our residents, the Board will be asking non-residents to allow for comments from town of North Andover residents, North Andover clergy, and North Andover business owners first. Order will be maintained during the public comment period in accordance with the open meeting law. We have an expectation that we will treat each other with respect. Disagreement is a normal and healthy part of democracy, but how we disagree is important. Your cooperation tonight is very much appreciated. I would also ask that proponents of the flag line up on the left side and those opposed to the flag on the right side so that we can make sure that we give equal time to both sides as we go through the public comment process. With that, I would invite those who have public comments to come forward. Ready? Okay. If we could start on the left. And if everybody could give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Aziz. I'm at 4 High Street in North Andover. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests, thank you for joining me today as we discuss a symbol that carries profound significance for many around the world, the raising of the Palestinian flag. This simple act is laden with historical, cultural, and political meaning, representing the aspirations and struggles of the Palestinian people. The Palestinian flag, the Palestinian flag with its bold tricolor of black, white, and green adorned with red triangle and a symbol of hope, holds a powerful narrative. It is not merely a piece of cloth. It is a symbol of resilience, an identity of people whose history has been marked by a complex tapestry of challenges and triumphs. Raising the Palestinian flag is an act that resonates with the quest for self-determination, justice, and human rights. It is a call for recognition and acknowledgement of the Palestinian narrative, one that has too often been overshadowed by geopolitical dynamics. The flag embodies the dreams and aspirations of a people who have faced displacement, conflict, and adversity for decades. In understanding the significance of raising the Palestinian flag, we must recognize the importance of acknowledging the rights and dignity of all individuals regardless of their background. It is a call for a just and lasting resolution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, one that respects the rights of both parties and paves the way for a peaceful coexistence. Raising the Palestinian flag is a statement against oppression and a demand for justice. It is a reminder that the pursuit of peace should not come at the expense of human rights and the fundamental principles of justice. The international community has a crucial role to play in fostering dialogue, understanding and empathy to create a future where both Palestinians and Israelis can live side by side in peace and insecurity. Moreover, the act of raising the Palestinian flag is a celebration of cultural diversity and heritage. It symbolizes the rich history, traditions, and contributions of Palestinian people to the world. By recognizing and respecting these cultural elements, we contribute to a global tapestry that values diversity and promotes inclusivity. In conclusion, the act of raising the Palestinian flag is a profound gesture that goes beyond more symbolism. It is a call for justice, an assertion of identity, and a plea for a better future. As we reflect on the complexity of Israeli-Palestinian conflict, let us strive for a world where the raising of a flag is not just an act of symbolism, but a gesture, expression of the principle of justice, equality, and coexistence. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gerald Brecker. I live in North Andover. This is "The Stars in Stripes." This is a book of matches. It's my right under the Constitution to set this flag on fire, but just because it's my right doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And just because Ms. Kael has the constitutional right to raise her Palestinian flag on our common doesn't mean that it's the right thing either. The Star of David was raised in our town in solidarity with the people of Israel after the terrorist atrocities of October 7th. Now, under the threat of lawsuits, as we've heard, Ms. Kael wants to force the town to demonstrably and publicly associate itself with her cause. But what is that cause? Do any of us want to be associated with the cause of terrorism, murder, rape, slaughter, mayhem, and kidnapping? Or the cause of the cowardly Hamas terrorists who started this war and who used their own Palestinian people as human shields, who deliberately expose their people to the ravages of war, all the while bravely hiding in tunnels under schools, hospitals, mosques, and under children's beds? Hamas, who proclaimed that October 7th is only the first time that they will do the same thing again and again and again, that their only goal is the slaughter of Jews...
Order, please. Order. Excuse me, you will be removed if we cannot have order. If we cannot have...
May I continue, Madam Chair? May I continue? Or is this rabble going to continue to interrupt?
Please continue, Mr. Brecker.
Is our cause in North Andover going to be symbolized as the cause of Hamas, whose only goal is to slaughter all the Jews and eradicate the state of Israel from the river to the sea?
We either have order and listen to everybody, or I will call the meeting. So we can either take this as a listening opportunity and take the temperature down a bit, or we will close the meeting.
I want to conclude my remarks with the story of two young women and that same flag Ms. Kael now wants to force our town to fly. One young woman was a renowned nature photographer whose work depicted every creature mentioned in the Bible. At dawn on March 11th, 1978, she was taking pictures of birds on a beach in northern Israel. The other young woman was the leader of a gang of Palestinian terrorists who came ashore that same morning on that same beach and who machine-gunned that photographer, who happened to be my cousin, Gail Rubin. After murdering my cousin Gail, the terrorists hijacked a taxi and two buses and murdered more than three dozen other innocent civilians before the authorities managed to put an end to the slaughter. And during that shootout, the young woman who led that gang of terrorist murderers...
You have 10 seconds.
Her name was Dalal Maghribi, brandished the same blood-soaked Palestinian flag Ms. Kael now wants to force us to fly on our town common. She should withdraw her ill-advised demand.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Alad Dahan. I live on Cleveland Street in North Andover. I did not prepare anything to say tonight. Honestly, I just want to speak. I'm a Palestinian-American. I was born in North Andover. I graduated high school here. I have kids here. I'm super involved in the town. I absolutely love this town. We ended up moving at some point, and I couldn't even last 10 months being out of this town before I put my house on the market and came back to North Andover. This town has always seemed like a village to me, where we all care about each other, we look out for each other. I have so many other people in town who'll be like, "Oh, I saw your son, and he's doing great," and we'll check in on each other. And I want it to stay that way. I desperately want this town to stay that way. And I just feel like raising the Palestinian flag along with the Israeli flag shows that. I really do. I love this town. I would not want to live anywhere else, and I just really hope that we can come together and just think about what it is on the smaller scale here. And I don't want any more division. I want us to see us supporting each other, loving each other, caring for each other, and that goes for both sides. I genuinely hold hard to believe in that. I love this town. Thank you.
Oh, we can't...
Thank you. All right, thank you. Good evening. I'm Rabbi Idan Ireland here, Rabbi of Congregation Avat Olam here in North Andover. We're here to discuss whether or not it's appropriate to raise the Palestinian flag in North Andover on town property where there is unrest in the United States. One month ago, more than 2,000 Palestinians linked to the Islamic Resistance...
Ma'am, through me, please.
Thank you. One month ago, more than 2,000 Palestinians linked to the Islamic Resistance Movement, more commonly known as Hamas, crossed into Israel to rape, shoot, butcher, burn, torture, abduct, and murder as many babies, children, men, women, and elderly as they could. They slaughtered about 1,200 people, including U.S. citizens, abducted more than 200 people, also including U.S. citizens, and injured thousands. This was the most horrific massacre of Jews since the Holocaust. Meanwhile, many protest across the country and on college campuses, which were represented as aiming to be peaceful expression in support of Palestinians, have turned into violent uprising in support of Hamas's aims. The Palestinian flag has served as a symbol to rally anti-Semitic sentiment along with chants of "From the River to the Sea," a call to replace the only one Jewish state, the only democracy in the Middle East. The House of Representatives had no tolerance for Congresswoman Talib for calling her use for the slogan "From the River to the Sea." In a legitimate exercise of governmental power during extraordinary times, Congress recognized these words as a violent call for eradication of the Jews in Israel, and they censured her. Whether it is the recent battery of Jewish students at Tulane in Ohio State or the homicide of a Jewish man in L.A. by a pro-Palestinian protester, the threats are real, and they often signal anti-American sentiment. In fact, just last week, at the pro-Palestinian protest in New York City, a demonstrator climbed a pole at the corner of Lexington and East 43rd Street where he removed a U.S. flag, threw it to the ground, and replaced it with Palestinian flags to a cheering crowd. Unfortunately, this is what that flag represents today in the aftermath of the massacre committed by the elected Palestinian leadership ruling Gaza. While Jews around the world, including here in the United States, are still grief-stricken by the massacre and abductions, crowds have been waving the Palestinian flag while supporting Hamas's goals.
Sir, you have 10 seconds.
Today, Palestinian flags have become a symbol of encouragement for the genocide of the Jewish people. By raising it, North Andover would be condemning terrorism, hatred, anti-Semitism, and continuing activity of U.S. citizens. God bless America, and I'm Israel Chai. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jenna Chayel. I live at 33 Leon Drive. My family name is pronounced Chayel, not Kael. Shalom, assalamu alaikum, and hello to all. We are not here to oppose any group or denomination as we condemn hate and violence in all its forms. We are here today in solidarity with Palestine and to mourn and honor more than 11,000 Palestinian civilian lives that have been tragically taken, more than 4,000 of which are children. The children brutally massacred are not just figures. They are no different from the children anywhere in the world, your children. 4,000 hopes, 4,000 dreams, 4,000 futures, absolutely destroyed and unjustly taken. Almost 28,000 civilians are injured and unable to receive adequate medical attention due to the shortage of equipment and resources. I've had to update these numbers since last week, as this week has been fatal for Palestinians. We have watched these tragic events take place in front of our eyes. We've seen the bombardment of hospitals, refugee camps, schools, and places of worship, not to mention the deliberate actions of the Israeli government of cutting off water and electricity from Gazans, resulting in a severe humanitarian crisis and the death of at least 12 Palestinians from starvation. In Anshifa Hospital, premature babies have been taken out of incubators as the hospital has lost power. Two babies have died due to a lack of oxygen and 37 babies at a risk of a similar fate. The U.N. has described the situation in Gaza as a children's graveyard. All of these actions by the Israeli government are war crimes as per international law. The civilians lost are not collateral damage of a war. They are the overwhelming majority of casualties. We are here to validate the grief of Palestinians and those affected in our community and beyond. The Palestinian flag does not represent hate. It does not represent terrorism, and it does not represent anti-Semitism, and we will not allow it to be portrayed in that light. The Palestinian flag is no different from any other country's flag. It represents its people, its history, and its heritage. There are almost 5 million Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank, as well as 14 million Palestinians displaced around the world. To attribute the horrific events of October 7th to the entire Palestinian population is a gross generalization, blatant racism, and Islamophobia. We, the people of North Andover, deserve to be heard in our own town. Right now, I, as a North Andover resident, do not feel seen or represented. Even further, I feel misrepresented. The Muslim and Arab community feel misrepresented and ostracized, a feeling we've endured in this country for far too long. Our only request is to raise the Palestinian flag, as has been done for the Israeli flag. We're here before you today asking you to validate our grief and show us that we matter, that we are seen and embraced in our hometown. We're merely exercising our constitutional right to equality and equal representation.
10 seconds.
Again, it is my constitutional right to raise this flag. I urge you to stand with us today, to stand with humanity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Is this working? Close, okay. Good evening. I'm Lauren Tischler-Mindlin, and I'm the Executive Director of the Merrimack Valley Jewish Federation that serves the entire community. The mission, for those who do not know, the mission of the Merrimack Valley Jewish Federation is to build community, foster Jewish living, and help people in need. In the past, we have supported such efforts as Project Home Again that helps families in the Merrimack Valley outfit homes and rebuild their lives. Free loans to people who need temporary assistance to pay their rent or electric bills, and the Arava Institute for Environmental Studies in Israel that brings together Israelis, Palestinians, Jordanians, and other Arab partners to advance environmental sustainability in the region. Sadly, last year, nearly half of all of our grants were allocated to local Merrimack Valley synagogues to help them augment their security systems and procedures. Yes, I said last year, our synagogues asked for help to beep up the security in 2022, before October 7th. And today, reputable agencies that work together against hate have noted a 400% increase in anti-Semitic acts of violence. The unfortunate reality is that your Jewish neighbors are afraid. We live in a constant state of insecurity with federal homeland security, law enforcement, and intelligence agencies warning of increased risk and threat. They call for everyone to remain vigilant. Vigilance is intense, unremitting, wary watchfulness for possible danger or difficulties. Friends, this is why we are here talking to you today. Of course, we are each as individuals and congregations in a whole community doing all we can to mitigate our danger. Some have stopped wearing their Jewish star jewelry. Others have taken down their mezuzah, the box of prayers nailed to their front door. People zoom to synagogue instead of taking the risk of becoming a collective target. And the Merrimack Valley Jewish Federation has just had a relevant experience to share with you. On October 8th, one day after the Hamas attack, our local clergy and I began a discussion about the need to bring our community together. The program was to include prayers sung and spoken for the dead, the wounded, the hostages, all people in Israel whose daily ongoing stresses and fear had been elevated beyond measure, and all innocent civilians. The to-do list for this event included find a location, arrange for security, and develop a plan for publicity.
Ma'am, you have 10 seconds.
Okay. Each item was framed by our Jewish community's need to convene peacefully and safely. We had originally hired two policemen.
Your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Name and address.
My name is Nora Dufier. I live at 11 Rosedale. First, I'd like to thank you guys for your service to the town and the officers here tonight. Really appreciate it. And I want to start off by saying that I've been a North Andover resident for the last 17 years, and for reference, I'm 22 years old. So I've lived here the majority of my life. And I am so proud and so grateful to have grown up in this town and to have attended and graduated from this very high school. During my time here, I learned about our town's values: respect, achievement, inclusion, service, and empathy. As an American, as a Muslim, as an Arab, and as a member of this town, a lot of the comments I have seen in opposition to this request do not represent those values, namely inclusion and empathy. I would like to make it abundantly clear: myself and those arguing for the raising of the Palestinian flag do not support Hamas. I detest Hamas, and I wholeheartedly condemn the attacks on October 7th, which is why none of us protested or opposed the raising of the Israeli flag in support of the innocent Israelis who lost their lives. However, it is unfair for us to show our solidarity to them and not recognize the innocent Palestinian civilians being mercilessly bombed and decimated by the IDF. The flag we are arguing for is not the Hamas flag. It is the flag of the Palestinian people. It is for the more than 11,000 innocent Palestinians in Gaza who have been killed so far, more than 40% of whom are children, the very same demographic that fill our schools. The flag is for the innocent doctors, nurses, firefighters, ambulance drivers, and all first responders who are also lost to the conflict. The flag is for the mothers who have had to write their children's names on their legs so they can identify their bodies when pulled out of the rubble. The atrocities on either side are reprehensible and sickening, which is why we must recognize both Israel and Palestine's suffering and express solidarity for all innocent civilians on either side. I urge the Board to make the correct decision today and create a space where everyone can be equally represented, recognized, and validated. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Hi, dear Board. I do live in North Andover, and I live here for over 20 years. If you want my details, I wrote them on a piece of paper as I fear, for my life and for the life of my children, I can come and give it to you.
Just state it for the record, please.
Okay. Dear members of Select Board, as we are led to believe, the Palestinian flag is being promoted as a flag of peace and justice. There are several points to be made. As far as the peace part on that message, let me quote the former Secretary of State, Mrs. Hillary Clinton, as she is the top expert with firsthand knowledge on those affairs. "There was a ceasefire on October 6th," she said a few days ago. The Hamas broke their barbaric attack on Israeli civilians. Hamas has constantly broken ceasefire over numbers of years. As far as justice part, I would like... And I want to start off by saying that I've been a North Andover resident for the last seventeen years, and for reference, I'm 22 years old. So I've lived here the majority of my life. And I am so proud and so grateful to have grown up in this town and to have attended and graduated from this very high school. During my time here, I learned about our town's values: respect, achievement, inclusion, service, and empathy. As an American, as a Muslim, as an Arab, and as a member of this town, a lot of the comments I have seen in opposition to this request do not represent those values, namely inclusion and empathy. I would like to make it abundantly clear: myself and those arguing for the raising of the Palestinian flag do not support Hamas. I detest Hamas, and I wholeheartedly condemn the attacks on October 7th, which is why which is why none of us protested or opposed the raising of the Israeli flag in support of the innocent Israelis who lost their lives. However, it is unfair for us to show our solidarity to them and not recognize the innocent Palestinian civilians being mercilessly bombed and decimated by the IDF. The flag we are arguing for is not the Hamas flag. It is the flag of the Palestinian people. It is for the more than eleven thousand innocent Palestinians in Gaza who have been killed so far, more than forty percent of whom are children, the very same demographic that fill our schools. The flag is for the innocent doctors, nurses, firefighters, ambulance drivers, and all first responders who are also lost to the conflict. The flag is for the mothers who have had to write their children's names on their legs so they can identify their bodies when pulled out of the rubble. The atrocities on either side are reprehensible and sickening, which is why we must recognize both Israel and Palestine's suffering and express solidarity for all innocent civilians on either side. I urge the board to make the correct decision today and create a space where everyone can be equally represented, recognized, and validated. Thank you.
Hi, dear board. I do live in North Andover, and I live here for over twenty years. If you want my details, I wrote them on a piece of paper as I fear, for my life and for the life of my children, I can come and give it to you.
Just state it for the record, please.
Okay. Dear members of select board, as we are led to believe, the Palestinian flag is being promoted as a flag of peace and justice. There are several points to be made. As far as the peace part on that message, let me quote the former Secretary of State, Mrs. Hillary Clinton, as she is the top expert with firsthand knowledge on those affairs. "There was a ceasefire on October 6th," she said a few days ago. "The Hamas broke the barbaric attack on Israeli civilians." Hamas has constantly broken ceasefire over numbers of years. As far as justice part, I would like to quote Mrs. Clinton one more time. "Hamas is a terrorist organization," she said. "As a terrorist organization, it targets not only its neighbors on the Israeli side, but also the people that they claim they govern under that same flag." Quoting Mrs. Clinton again, what has been going on for numbers of years under Hamas' rule is the building of two hundred miles of tunnels under Gaza, the storing of munitions of all kinds of explosives under hospitals, under civilian targets, and use of civilians as tools of war by Hamas. So under that flag, people of Gaza are being used as expendable human shield material. Even now, when Israeli Defense Forces provide humanitarian evacuation routes, those terrorists prevent civilians from living, trying to keep them under fire as a shield. Is that the justice that you want for the people of Palestine? Given the facts, one would hope that this is so obvious that people of Gaza are being held hostages under this flag by Hamas. Why would anyone in the United States of America want to raise a flag of the terrorist organization which is still holding hostages and Americans among them? Needless to say, that we all see the news about so-called pro-Palestinian rallies where the flag goes hand in hand with antisemitic slogans that do not need to be repeated here. Given the facts and reading public comments from the people who are supporting to raise that flag, it's very clear to me, it is not
Ma'am, you have ten seconds.
...love and compassion towards the Palestinians that drive the requesters to raise the flag, but hate and antisemitism. Thank you.
Dahlia Rizik, 28 Stagecoach Road. What's happening in Israel and Palestine is heartbreaking. There is a complete breakdown in the ability to respect one another and to love your neighbor. What's happening there should not be happening here. I've listened to your conversations tonight about fear, and I understand how hard it must feel to wear outwardly religious items and feel like you might be persecuted for it, particularly as a Muslim in a post-9/11 world, when things happen from our groups that we didn't agree with and that we didn't condone, but we found that we might be vilified for. But looking at the events of tonight, just the speeches alone, forgetting everything that's happened before six o'clock and seven o'clock tonight and everything that's going to happen after, our community had no problem with the raising of the Israeli flag and having the Israeli sadness represented. We had no rallies, we had no meetings, we had no objections. It's sad to see the level of anger raising the Palestinian flag has brought about and the hatred directed towards our community. It seems to be forgotten that we are one community. Yesterday, I read that thirteen thousand Gazan children hold the world record for the most kites flown at one time. What a cool thing. Can you imagine how cool it would be to have those bragging rights someday and tell your children that I hold the world record for holding as many kites as those kids did? But most of those kids are not going to have a chance to have children or tell their children that that happened to them. We mourn them, and we respect that we have the right to raise a flag to mourn them, just like you have the right to raise a flag and mourn the Israeli children. We should respect and support one another and set a peaceful example of what a community can be. While that's kind of the end of my speech, I do want to talk about one more thing that we've talked about in here tonight. There's a little bit of changing of the rhetoric, from the river to the sea, and then we take that and turn it into antisemitism. You cannot tell what is in people's hearts, and you cannot determine that for them with twistings of words. If someone is antisemitic, that means that they are anti-Jewish, and unless I have said I am anti-Jewish, then I am not antisemitic. When somebody says "from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free," if somebody says "from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free," that means what they mean is Palestine will be free. It does not mean I want to... It does not mean... It does not mean we want to eradicate all Jews. It simply says we want freedom.
You have ten seconds.
Thank you. Our song says "The land of the free and the home of the brave," and that is accepted, and freedom for Palestinians is acceptable too.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Cravat. I live on Salem Street. My background is I've been a history teacher in college for lots of years. Twenty-four years ago, my family and I moved to North Andover. We stay in North Andover because, as many of you have said, this is a great community. Our children went to kindergarten through high school here, and they're gone, and we choose to stay here because we love it here. The values of North Andover are basically support of others, tolerance of others, friendship toward others. Those are good values. Those are values that we probably all share in this room. It is a fact that the leaders of Gaza, it is a fact based on their own words and the words and their doctrine, that they do not support the right for Israel to even exist. They do not support the right for Jews to even exist. Those are not the values of North Andover. Those are not our values here. Until that changes, that flag, even though I believe what you say and I believe in your hearts you are honest, until that changes, that flag has no place in this place. In this place, we embrace support of others. We embrace tolerance. You could try to drown me out, but the truth, the truth, is that the words and the doctrine of the leaders of Gaza do not support the right for us to even exist.
Sir, can you address us, the board, please?
Thank you for letting me speak, and I hope in my heart, as I'm sure you all do, that there will be peace in Israel.
Name and address, please.
Hello, select men, women, and all in attendance today. My name is Selma Chayed. I live at 33 Leanne. I'm here for one reason only, and that's raising the Palestinian flag. I want to raise this flag to commemorate the Palestinian lives lost and stand in solidarity with Palestine. The Israeli flag was raised with no objection, as we do acknowledge there are lives lost on both sides, and it is necessary that a community grieves and mourns their members. That being said, it is only fair to remember all who are affected, and it would be unfair and discriminatory to not put up the Palestinian flag for the same duration as the Israeli flag. I'm asking for you to raise the flag to remember the kids who were brutally murdered, the families separated and displaced from their homes, the refugees in camps, the family members that are the last ones standing in their lineage, the parents who lost their children, and the children who are left as orphans. I'm asking you to put up this symbol of strength and resistance against the genocide because we cannot stand by and watch silently. Putting up the Palestinian flag is a step towards healing, peace, and unity. As many of you know, an email was sent out mentioning my name with a hyperlink sharing the email and my email and home address, as well as the university I'm enrolled in, and it was further circulated on Facebook. I will not share the name of those who committed that act, as the least I can do is respect an individual and their privacy despite them violating my own privacy and using my information with no consent. But that email mentioned, and I quote, that the Palestinian flag represents a powerful symbol of antisemitism and Jewish hate. We will not let the Palestinian flag be seen in that light, and let me be clear, I do not condone hatred, nor do I condone antisemitism, and that's not the goal. And the email sent out trying to twist my words into otherwise and scare me into silence is ineffective. People reaching out to my university's president claiming that I put posters up on a synagogue or whatever other false accusations were made to discredit our efforts to put up this flag have failed, as I did nothing of the sort, and defaming my name will not be tolerated. I will reiterate, the Palestinian flag does not represent antisemitism, hatred, terrorists, or war. The Palestinian flag represents nothing but peace, unity, strength, and the Palestinian people, and that is what I stand for.
My name is Michael Slipoy. I live in North Andover, Kandazik Road. First thing that we heard here when we stepped into the room, that the decision already has been made. I won't be sure that it's not true, and we're not part of just one big circus. And I want to make a couple of points here, and let me take you back a bit of history, back to September 11, 2001, twenty-two years ago, when we all were watching news, seeing towers burning, people jumping out of windows, first responders rushing in to save, desperately trying to save lives. At the same time, on the streets of Ramallah in Gaza, people were laughing, dancing, and celebrating. That's a fact. They were doing it under that flag. Now, let's take to October 7th. The brutality of killing surpassed Nazis by miles. Forty-hundred people, include twenty-nine Americans, killed. Two-hundred-and-thirty-nine people taken hostages, among them, our American citizens. It was done not by aliens, it was done by Hamas, who came from Gaza, which is officially ruling as an authority there under that flag. Nothing else, that flag. Well, after the attack, after the attack, they took parade to the people, to the streets of Gaza, parading like trophies, dead bodies of naked girls, Israeli girls. And people, people in Gaza, on streets of Gaza were laughing, celebrating, waving that flag. When we now go and we see all the news, all the hundreds of, you know, in DC, in New York, people everywhere, you know, in Seattle, they're going these demonstrations calling for deaths of Jews, deaths of Israel, what flag they're waving? That flag! Now...
Sir, you have ten seconds.
And while this is... I have thirty seconds, sorry.
Twenty seconds, sorry.
Okay? And now, while everything happens, we have our American troops in Middle East, and while we're celebrating here just two days ago Veterans Day, by that time, they were attacked by supporters of Hamas. In last three weeks, forty-one attacks on American troops. Just Friday, eight attacks on American troops. Is that what we want to celebrate here by raising this flag?
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
My name is Michael Liss, and I reside at 30 Leanne Drive. For myself, as well as many other members of the Jewish community of North Andover, October 7th was a day of horror. Though I am not Israeli, the murders have had a deep and personal impact on all of us. Following that day, an Israeli flag was raised and flew for the next month. While I did not and would not have asked for an Israeli flag to be raised, I took it in the manner it was given, as an acknowledgement of our suffering and not an endorsement of a particular government or set of policies, and I am thankful for that gift. But of course, we are not the only ones in pain. My Arab-American neighbors have watched children die and are mourning every bit as much as we are. We must, as Jews, view all humans as bidzalim elohim, made in the image of God. We must mourn all death and celebrate all life, regardless of religion, ethnicity. The Chayel family are wonderful neighbors. Their children regularly babysit my children. We have shared many meals together. When there was a swastika graffiti, when there's swastika graffiti in town two years ago, they came to the rally against antisemitism. We never asked them to come, they simply knew it as the right thing. I love them dearly, and it hurts me deeply to see them in pain for the same reasons that I am on the opposite side of a war. It cannot be the select board's job to solve world affairs, and in many ways, it's not fair to ask you to take any position at all. But it is your job to make sure that all of our community members are recognized and heard. This board gave me that gift, and I ask that you grant the same to my neighbors. Thank you.
My name is Isaac Akiva. I live on Cartland Lane. Two and a half years ago, my family and I chose to move to North Andover and make it our hometown. Different reasons led to our decision to relocate from Arlington to North Andover, but at the top of the list were the ability to live in a community where we and our young children will feel welcomed and safe, a community of reasonable people, a place that still makes sense in a world where making sense is sometimes a rare commodity. And for two and a half years, we felt safe, felt at home and welcomed, felt that we live in a place that makes sense. That is until we learned that our town is seriously considering the petition to fly the Palestinian flag in the town's common. Allow me to tell you about this flag and what it represents. It has been less than forty days since we witnessed some of the most horrible atrocities that were committed against Jews and Israelis since the Holocaust. Less than forty days since innocent civilians were butchered, raped, beheaded, burnt in ovens. Hundreds of babies, children, martyrs, Holocaust survivors were kidnapped into Gaza where they are held hostage by terrorists, less than forty days. All this happened under one banner, under one flag, the Palestinian flag, that one. It has been almost forty days, and the so-called moderate Palestinian leadership has not yet found the words to condemn these genocide atrocities. The same Palestinian leadership who has been paying terrorists for successfully slaughtering Jews, the same leadership who doesn't seem to know the meaning of human rights when it comes to treating their own people. They do that under one banner, under one flag, that Palestinian flag. It's been almost forty days that the streets of every major US and European city are flooded with violent antisemitic protesters who chant for the annihilation of Israel, who calls to keep the world clean of Jews, and to finish Hitler's work, who celebrate the death of Jewish babies. They too do that under one banner, under one flag, the Palestinian flag. Today, we, the town of North Andover, must ask, is this still the same reasonable, safe, and welcoming town? Is this the flag we would like our children to see? The answer must be no, and shall we remain no until this flag is no longer associated with violence, hatred, racism, discrimination, and antisemitism? And I will say one thing, peace will come when they choose life. That's when we can all come together. That's not the time.
Hi, my name is Yomna Chayed, and I live at 33 Leanne Drive. Thank you for having us here today, and thank you for hearing us. I thank God for the ability to use my voice, and I thank God for my constitutional right to freedom of speech, a right that not everyone has. I grew up in North Andover. I've enjoyed the lovely things in this town. I went to the libraries, I went to the town commons, I love my neighbors. Let's just put that out there first. Eleven thousand Palestinians have been killed by Israel in the last month. Six thousand of the eleven thousand Palestinians killed are women and children. Thirty thousand Palestinians who survived have suffered horrendous injuries. Those who survived don't have anything left. They've lost their families, homes, and whole future. They have no access to basic necessities like water, food, shelter, and health care due to the siege that the Israeli government has in place. This past week, premature babies had to be taken out of their incubators and wrapped in tinfoil, wrapped in tinfoil, please think about that, due to the hospital being cut off from electricity. This is a humanitarian crisis and a public health crisis. If some are saying the Palestinian flag represents hate, then one could say that the Israeli then one could say that the Israeli flag represents hate. But no one is saying that, because we are saddened by the innocent lives lost on both sides. So why, why are some members of the community allowed to mourn and stand in solidarity with innocent lives, but when more members of the community ask for the same, then they face opposition? The Israeli flag went up in solidarity with the innocent lives lost, and we are asking the same for Palestinian lives. No life is worth more than another life. Every ethnicity deserves equal representation. We are requesting equality, peace, inclusion, and most importantly, we are requesting humanity. I have, I have one more thing to add from an article titled "So What Did the Muslims Do For The Jews?" Islam Saved Jewelry. This is an unpopular, discomforting claim in the modern world, but it is a historical truth. The argument for it is double. In 570 CE, when the Prophet Muhammad was born, the Jews and Judaism were on their way to oblivion. And the second, the coming of Islam helped them, and provided a new context which helped them survive, flourish, and lay foundations for subsequent Jewish cultural prosperity. I love everyone, and I hope we can come to an agreement. This is, this is an article from The Jewish Chronicle. If anybody wants it, we can definitely send it over, The Jewish Chronicle. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, name and address, please.
So I had something prepared, but I wanted to say something a little different, I guess. I'm an Israeli, you can figure out by now. Fundly, we call our Arab neighbors our cousins, because we are, right? Unfortunately, that flag is tainted. It is tainted. And I believe that the people over here that want that flag raised do believe in peace. Do believe that we should all be representatives, representing humanity, right? However, that flag is tainted, and if you cannot recognize that, that's a problem. That flag is being raised in rallies that call for murder. That flag is being used, the people... The people that are governing under that flag have promised, have promised, to massacre again. I ask, come with a different symbol that will really symbolize the humanity. And I just want to say... People are saying, it's just the other side. Like this is, what's going on over there isn't football game, it's a friendly match. It is not. There is war going on over there. There is war. And one side is an ally, and the other side celebrates deaths of Americans. That side still has 14 American hostages. When did we become so PC that we will even consider raising a flag of people that chant "Death To America"? When did we become so weak that we will agree to put a flag of people that burn ours? Do I need to remind people that they, that there are still, and by the way, a three-years-old American is still being held hostage under that flag? You want to put that flag on the pole? Fine. You want to put it in the middle of the community? Fine. I guess it's a constitutional right, but I will say what I see, when I see this flag under that pole, I see those 30 killed Americans. I see people chanting "Death To America", and I see our flag.
Ma'am, you have 10 seconds.
Fine. I see our flag, the red, white, and blue burning. Thank you.
Name and address.
My name is Rabia, and I reside at 20 Empire. Esteemed members of the Board, community leaders, and fellow residents, I stand before you today with an urgent plea for a symbolic act that transcends borders and speaks to the core of our shared humanity. The raising of the Palestinian flag in our town common. This is not just a matter of colorful fabric, it is a call to action, a declaration that our community stands firmly on the side of justice, empathy, and unity. This is not a political statement, it is a humanitarian one. In a world marred by division and strife, we have an opportunity to send a powerful message that North Andover refuses to be passive observers to the injustices faced by others. By raising the Palestinian flag, we declare that we stand for a world where every individual, regardless of their background, can live free from oppression. Our town common is a symbol of shared space, and it should reflect the diversity of voices within our community. The Palestinian flag, flying alongside others, represents, represents an urgent plea for dialogue, understanding, and a commitment to peace. It's a call to action urging us to be agents of change in a world desperately in need of unity. Let us not underestimate the impact of this small, yet meaningful gesture. By allowing the Palestinian flag to fly, we declare that our community is one that values justice over complacency, empathy over indifference, and unity over division. I implore this Board to recognize the urgency of this moment, to seize the opportunity to take, to make a statement that reverberates beyond our town borders. Let us be a beacon of compassion, standing on the side of humanity. Raising the Palestinian flag in our town common is a non-negotiable demand for justice. We cannot be passive witnesses to history repeating itself. To remain indifferent is to echo the silence of Holocaust deniers. Let us learn from the past, act with moral clarity, and raise the Palestinian flag as a powerful statement of solidarity against injustice. It is time to speak out, to be a voice for the voiceless, and to stand as a beacon of hope in a world that cannot afford to forget the lessons of our shared history. I urge this Board to consider the profound impact that raising the Palestinian flag in our town common can have on fostering unity, understanding, and compassion. Let us be a beacon of inclusivity, sending a message that North Andover, that in North Andover, every voice is heard, every voice is valued, and every person is respected. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
My name is Lisa Gruber, and I live on Ironwood Road in North Andover. I have been with my family, a resident of North Andover, the last 23 years. Both of our children went through public school, through the, through 12th grade. When I heard about this meeting coming up, and the vote that was going to ensue afterwards, I was very conflicted. I'm probably not going to make anybody happy on either side. I don't believe that any other flag, I'm going to be very simple, other than the United States flag and the state of Massachusetts should fly in our town common. That is all.
Name and address, please. We have about 10 minutes left in public comment.
Hi, my name is Rahmatia, I live on Empire Drive. Raising the Palestinian flag signifies sympathy with over 11,000 civilians, with more than half being children and infants tragically and indiscriminately killed by missiles and airstrikes. The flag symbolizes the recognition of the pain inflicted on 2.2 million of the indigenous population deprived of food, water, medicine, electricity, and gas, as a collective punishment by the IDF. The act of displaying the Palestinian flag is in harmony with our town's community values of inclusiveness and compassion, conveying a message against fear and hatred. It's imperative to address the alarming misinformation campaign linking the flag with terrorism, a perception that dehumanizes the entire Palestinian population, like myself and my kids. Expressing solidarity during these challenging times foster unity and compassion with our, within our community. The Israeli flag has been flying at the common of support of 11, of the 1,100 Israeli citizens killed on October 7th. We are a town with strong values, and we need to show that the value, that we value innocent human lives equally, and not based on ethnicity and/or race. It is concerning though, and we've heard a lot from both debates here, but it is concerning when local religious leaders and others in town disseminate, continue to disseminate information, and labels the Palestinian flag as antisemitic, stating that Palestinian flag promotes hatred and darkness. The Palestinian flag represents the aspiration and national identity of the Palestinian people who have their own unique culture and history that promotes love, peace, harmony, rather than hatred. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
My name is Anne Marie Guggenberger, I live on Blue Ridge Road. I'm speaking tonight as the daughter and the mother of naval officers. My father was a lieutenant commander in the United States Navy, and my son currently serves as a naval submarine officer. With great thanks to the North Andover Patriotic Observance Committee, our town had a beautiful Veterans Day ceremony on Saturday, honoring all those who have sacrificed to protect and defend our precious freedoms. Meanwhile, that same day, while we in North Andover were celebrating our military heroes in New York City at the corner of Lexington Avenue and East 43rd Street, a mob carrying Palestinian flags surrounded one of their own as he climbed the street pole and broke the American flags off of it, dropping them to the ground. I am not sure if he also placed the Palestinian flags on the pole, or if that had been done earlier, but nonetheless, as our torn-down American flags laid on the ground, Palestinian flags were flying from the pole. Are we seriously going to fly the flag of a country whose people so blatantly desecrated our American flag on our Veterans Day? The very flag that we pledged allegiance to at the start of this meeting? Flying the Palestinian flag on our common will be a kick in the face to every veteran who has ever served this country. And I hope that anyone who makes this decision tonight, who has had a loved one who has served in the military, will take this into serious consideration. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Wesal Nusshif, 11 Rosdale. My family and I have been residents in North Andover for the past 17 years. My husband and I have raised our four children here, who attended Thompson, Franklin, the middle school, and the high school. We had a great experience living in harmony with our neighbors and our friends in the community from different ethnicities, religions, and beliefs. However, with the start of the flag controversy, we became alarmed by the dangerous rhetoric implying that flying the Palestinian flag is like flying the Hamas flag. This rhetoric is dangerous, and can cause a tragedy like the one that took place on October 14 in Chicago, Illinois, when the landlord stabbed a six-year-old Palestinian boy 26 times, because he believed that all Palestinians, Muslims, were terrorists. This dangerous rhetoric has no place in our community. The other alarming claim is that flying the Palestinian flag is antisemitic. We recognize the pain suffered by Israelis and Jews on October 7, and the loss of civilians, and the kidnapping of hostages. We also recognize and condemn the bombing of 2.3 million civilians in Gaza, half of which were under, of, less than 15 years old. They were not even born when Hamas was voted in power. We cannot recognize and acknowledge the pain and suffering on one side, while ignoring the other side. It's not humanly possible to see children pulled from the rebels, to see premature babies taken out of incubators for lack of electricity, to see pregnant women delivering on the streets because hospitals have overcapacity, to see doctors, nurses targeted by snipers, and not feel pain, heartbreak, and sadness. While the Israeli flag was raised few days after the October 7th attack, no one from our community opposed it, because we acknowledged the pain and the loss of the innocent civilians and the 240-plus hostages. Raising both flags is the only way to show our community that we stand by the suffering of both sides. We pray for the safe return of hostages. We ask for the ceasefire for Gaza, and we hope for peace between Israel and Palestine through a two-state solution. In our town, we had many controversial debates in the past. The vote on the marijuana facility, the Amazon facility, the Royal Crest Development Project. Every time, there were passionate arguments, emotions ran high. But the next day, we all went back to our peaceful lives in our community. I urge my fellow residents this time to do the same. To rise above our differences and emotions and any divisions.
Ma'am, you have 10 seconds.
And to stand united, to support each other in these difficult times of loss and pain. Thank you.
We'll take one more public comment. We're coming to the end of the hour.
Thank you, Dave Brown, Old Farm Road, North Andover. I want to thank you, the Select Board, for your service and for soliciting public input on this, obviously, very emotional issue, and there's a lot of emotion in the room. It's appropriate, it's understood, I think we all feel it. I agree with many of the sentiments that were spoken on the other side of the auditorium, especially the young man, only 22-years-old, had quite a good, good presentation there. He does deserve applause. You know, and I, I would like to say that it's however, it's how things are perceived that matters. And I accept that this is intended to be peaceful, I firmly believe that. But I would respectfully request that if you really want to make a statement for peace, the smart thing to do would be to withdraw the application, because that would be the most powerful possible way you could indicate that you really are seeking a peaceful resolution of this issue in front of our Select Board. So with, with true respect, I request that. And I want everybody to know, I think it's great that our voices have all been heard. Thank you.
We're at the end of our public comment for this evening. If everybody could return to their seats. Every, I did, I did. I said this was the end of public comment. We'll be moving to our agenda item, which is the raising of the Palestinian flag, request by Salma Chael. If she could come forward, please. Salma will be, will keep the three-minute limit as well.
Sorry, can you repeat?
We're just going to keep the three-minute time limit as well.
Okay.
For your comments.
I don't, I don't have much further to say, except, I mean, you guys heard, everybody's pretty much on the same page. Hamas does not represent Palestine. Okay. I think I should give my time to someone else who didn't get a chance to talk, because I already said everything I had to say.
Salma, you, as the proponent, you're the only one allowed to speak at this time.
Okay. Sorry. Hamas does not represent Palestine, and I think that's the middle ground that we came to. Palestinians are their own people, so they deserve to be represented. And it's not just Palestinians that we're standing up for. We're standing up for the Arab community, we're standing up for the Muslim community, and we're standing up for their allies, because they're the people who, who apparently we can't grieve in peace, just, just as others did. So we should have the privilege of grieving and mourning our members. And I hope that you guys see that this isn't an attack on any, on any group of people. This isn't a means to harm anyone, this is a way for us to grieve and to represent those lives that were lost. And I hope that you guys can see from everybody's comments tonight, that's what we're here for.
Thank you. If I could ask everybody to keep order? Thank you, I appreciate it. With that, I'll take a motion from the board.
Madam Chair, we move to allow the petition of Salma Chael to raise the flag of Palestine from tomorrow, November 14th, to December 7th, 2023, as submitted under the policy in place at the time of her application. The allowance of this petition shall in no way express the sentiment or position of the town of North Andover or its agents.
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Thank you, the motion passes. Our next meeting will be... Motion to adjourn?